Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, we shall now begin the interactive dialogue with the Special Rapporteur on the situation of human rights in Cambodia. The list of speakers will close in fifteen minutes. It is my pleasure now to give the floor to Mrs. Rhona Smith to present her report.
Vice President, excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning, afternoon or evening as appropriate, wherever you are. I have the honour to present my fifth substantive report to the Council. The report appears as A H R C forty-five fifty-one and late due again to technical oversight by O H C H R. I am pleased that the comprehensive response of the Royal Government has now been made available as the addendum. For technical reasons, the pre-recorded video cannot be used. Thank you to the U N technical support team in Geneva for facilitating this Zoom presentation and thank you as always to the fantastic translators who make this and indeed every dialogue in the Council accessible. During the period under review, I have not been able to sorry, I've got to do exactly, I have not been able to undertake any field missions to Cambodia. I have continued to receive information from a range of stakeholders, including reports published by U N agencies in Cambodia, materials from international and national civil society organisations and information from a range of individuals. I have also maintained dialogue with the Royal Government, including through a virtual meeting with many ministries kindly hosted in August by the Cambodian Human Rights Committee. In this presentation, I will update the Council as to the current status of detainees associated with the former opposition party, concerns over freedoms of assembly, expression and association, particular limitations thereon, preparedness and progress on Covid nineteen, progress with the Ministry of Justice campaign to ameliorate the backlog of cases and thereby reduce prison overcrowding, then indicate some recommendations and offer some reflections on my experience of the role. My term expires in May, so the Council may choose to appoint a new mandate holder at its forty-sixth session. Civic and democratic space in Cambodia has continued to contract and there has been little evidence of any shift towards political reconciliation. There remain many challenges for those associated with the former Cambodia National Rescue Party, hereafter CNRP, which was, as you may recall, dissolved by the Supreme Court in twenty seventeen. Since June twenty nineteen, over one hundred and fifty persons associated with this former political party have been arrested and detained. The trial of the former president of the CNRP, Kem Sokha, for treason and conspiracy with a foreign power, which commenced in January twenty twenty, remains suspended due to Covid nineteen. The trial judges refused a request made by his legal team for resumption of the trial in September twenty twenty. Currently, some twenty-three individuals associated with CNRP are also in detention, many on charges of incitement. Vice President, excellencies, members of civil society, including human rights defenders, civil society members, trade unionists and environmentalists, continue to report being subject to undue interference, intimidation and harassment by authorities. The U N High Commissioner of Human Rights reported over twenty-four arrests in the period thirty-one July to twelve September. Her statement was deemed misleading and fallacious by the Permanent Mission here in Geneva. There have been multiple reports of demonstrators, many of them women, prevented from assembling to call for the release of detained family members, including political environmental activists. The level of force used by law enforcement against those outside Phnom Penh municipal port appeared excessive. The government is reminded of the limited permissible restrictions on freedom of assembly and the U N rules on the use of force. Public threats, surveillance and arrest of civil society members are still being reported to me from a range of sources. I believe there is no doubt that a degree of self censorship is being deployed, including by the media, in relation to human rights matters. An emergent concern is the information from O H C H R in Cambodia that they have received reports of at least seventy-one instances of what they term education. That is, individuals pressured into signing agreements to discontinue public commentary for our activities relating to awareness of Covid nineteen or human rights. On Covid nineteen, like so many member states, time has been spent in preparations connected to the Covid nineteen pandemic. As of the thirtieth of September twenty twenty, Cambodia has no community transmissions and the World Health Organisation records some two hundred and seventy-seven cases and no deaths. Recent increases in numbers were from imported cases. Cambodia has had the opportunity to learn from the responses elsewhere and develop its preparedness with U N agencies and other partners. Of course, all responses to Covid nineteen should prioritise respect for and protection of rights and freedoms, including those most vulnerable and marginalised and likely to be left behind. Covid nineteen testing remains limited and primarily available in the capital. Quarantine and testing controls are in place for those entering the country. While many aspects of public life were suspended in the initial months, as of September twenty twenty, schools are physically reopening. Government offices, businesses, restaurants and public spaces are also open. Covid nineteen preventive measures advocated by the W H O, including social distancing and the wearing of face coverings, are becoming less evident. Unfortunately, there is evidence of Covid nineteen being politicised. Initially, the virus was characterised by Sam Dikdako Prime Minister as a foreign disease. This contributed to discrimination and stigma, particularly in respect of Khmer Islam people. Moreover, a number of individuals have been arrested on charges of spreading false information regarding Covid nineteen, incitement or plotting against the government. Of the fourteen, I understand, are still in detention, ten are also associated with CNRP. The economic impact of measures taken to prevent the introduction and transmission of Covid nineteen has affected a range of human rights. The Ministry of Labour and Vocational Training reported that some two hundred and thirty factories had halted production or closed. Sector associations in the country suggest higher numbers of closures and accordingly of unemployment. Tourism has also been impacted, with thousands of related businesses closed, affecting tens of thousands of persons, according to the Ministry of Tourism. The government's socio-economic response should aim to build back better, addressing inequalities and advancing human rights. My report outlines government initiatives to assuage the economic impact of the loss of tourism, manufacturing and exports. Specifics are also provided by the government. I am concerned at reports that some people, especially indigenous groups, do not yet have access to ID poor cards and the associated assistance packages which the government has made available. The Asian Development Bank estimates over a million Cambodians will be pushed into poverty by job losses consequence to Covid nineteen. Moreover, on twelve August twenty twenty, Cambodia lost preferential access to the European Union for some twenty percent of its exports there. These everything but arms trade preferences are predicated on the EU's assessment of Cambodia's fulfilment of human rights, including labour rights. Many more people are now turning to microfinance and personal debt is a growing challenge. People are beginning to lose land and property which had been offered as collateral. As in so many countries, job losses, financial insecurity, movement restrictions, quarantine and school closures do not affect everyone equally. I am particularly concerned about the adverse impact on already vulnerable marginalised groups, including poor and near poor, indigenous people, ethnic minorities, women and children, especially girls. Since the submission of my annual report, the campaign launched by the Ministry of Justice to ameliorate prison overcrowding by expediting trials has produced results. By the end of August twenty twenty, over five thousand backlog criminal cases has been cleared. The number of prisoners and pre-trial detainees released from prison has increased, though that not necessarily reducing the overall prison numbers. Nevertheless, I remain concerned at the prevalence of pre-trial detention, the lack of viable alternatives to custodial sentencing, evidentiary standards and the variations in due process guarantees across the country. It has been a great honour and privilege to serve the Council and the people of Cambodia in this role. I have been encouraged by the evident increased awareness of international human rights norms and standards amongst members of the Royal Government. The language of human rights is increasingly deployed in meetings with government officials as well as in responses to communications from special procedures. I believe that after six special procedure mandate holders discharging this role, the government is well aware of its responsibilities in terms of the treaties it has voluntarily accepted. Now, the focus must surely be on ensuring that the terms of those treaties are reflected fully in national law. So finally, Vice President, excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, if I may highlight a few of my recommendations. To strengthen U N reporting and follow-up, update the common core document, prepare a rolling schedule for timely submissions and consultations and consider a comprehensive national action plan for human rights. To redress the diminished civil and political space, seek dialogue in a peaceful environment, continue positive interactions and consultations with civil society and strengthen members' protection from harassment, threat and intimidation, promote and protect freedoms of assembly and expression, ensuring everyone understands their rights and responsibilities and all laws meet international human rights standards. To strengthen human rights, systematically review all laws for continued relevance and human rights compliance, revising as necessary. To advance land rights, simplify the process for securing land titling, ensure any essential relocation of villages takes a holistic consultative approach. To further the administration of justice, ensure any effort to alleviate prison overcrowding through expediting trials is in compliance with international human rights obligations. Deploy pre-trial detention only when strictly necessary and consider drafting new guidance on evidentiary standards. Regarding Covid nineteen, continue working with the World Health Organisation and development partners to strengthen the public health system, review and develop the economic stimuli packages to build back better and to promote equality and reduce inequalities, consider a comprehensive non-discrimination law. Especially during this difficult time, it is imperative that all human rights are respected, promoted and fully protected in Cambodia. I stand ready to assist and support the Royal Government's efforts in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Special Rapporteur. According to our practice, we shall now start by hearing the delegation of the country concerned by the report and now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Cambodia. You have in total five minutes. I understand that you will take two minutes now and three minutes at the end of the interactive dialogue. Sir, the floor is yours.
Mr. Vice President, Cambodia has been openly and sincerely cooperating with the S R, who despite the Covid nineteen pandemic, continue to have a virtuous substantive exchange with my government in August. Human rights anchor the agenda of my government. First and foremost of these rights is peace, social stability and value being of all. Cambodia's responses to the Covid nineteen place people at the centre and leave no one behind. My government has turned the threat of this pandemic into opportunities for domestic reform in the field of education, health, social protection, justice and others. Secretary General Guterres stressed that we cannot choose and pick among human rights. Regrettably, the S R annual report deviated from this approach due to the one-sided and excessive focus on civil and political rights, with many positive development underreported. Last month, political rights of additional former opposition politicians were reinstated, taking the total number to twelve. They intend to form political parties to challenge the ruling party through elections. While many more wish to see the reinstatement, they had been blocked by the own leadership who branded those doing so as traitors. Mr. Kem Sokha has enjoyed total mobility within the country, except for overseas trips and political engagement. Over the past months, he received many foreign ambassadors at home, travelled to different corners of Cambodia and interacted with the Prime Minister. In the wake of the Covid outbreak, the Defence lawyer requested a provisional suspension of hearings, to which the court consented. Home to nearly six thousand NGOs, Cambodian men committed to addressing their challenges through established regular partnership forum and issuing the legalities on a proposed amendment to fourteen articles of the NGO law. Nearly two thousand media outlets, including the critical ones, have been functioning freely through its traditional and digital modes without censorship. Cambodian is journalists with professionalism who neither violate the rights of others nor twist the fact. Secretary General Guterres underlines that. Fake news and his speech are an attack of the essence of human rights norms and principle. I thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Ambassador. We shall now start. I now invite the interested delegations to ask questions to the Special Rapporteur and to make comments on her report. The list of speakers is now closed and first on my list is European Union.
Thank you, Mr. President. The European Union thanks Mrs. Smith for her continued work on human rights situation in Cambodia. We underline the importance of her mandate and appreciate Cambodia's cooperation. We note however that there has been very little or no progress in implementing the recommendations so far. The EU remains concerned about the continuous deficits in democracy and human rights, widespread arrests and detentions of human rights defenders, including trade union leader Mr. Rong Chuen, as well as increased surveillance of persons affiliated with the opposition. The EU reiterates its previous calls on the Cambodian authorities to reopen political space, to ensure space for civil society, to reinstate political rights of all opposition members and to release all opposition members, supporters and activists. The EU urges Cambodia to fully align its legislation with the international human rights obligations, especially the new state emergency law and the draft public order law. Mr. President, the EU appreciates Cambodia's participation in S I D O, S E R T and U P R reviews. However, for achieving a sustainable society, the authorities need to restore democracy, rule of law and fully implement all human rights, including all political and civil rights. Mrs. Smith, we ask your views on how the international community could best assist Cambodia in respecting its human rights obligations. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next speaker is Vietnam on behalf of ASEAN.
President, I have the honour to deliver this statement on behalf of the member states of ASEAN. The full statement will be uploaded on the extranet. We welcome efforts, active engagement and cooperation of the Cambodian government with human rights mechanism, the O H C H R and S R. We want note the information provided with regard to media and civil society freedom in Cambodia. We recognise that Cambodia has nearly two thousand media outlets as well as nearly six thousand registers, C S O. We welcome the holding of Bananru government C S O partnership forum and a working group to review the membership to the amendment to the N O G law. We also take note that Cambodia has managed Covid nineteen with fewer than three infected cases with no fatalities and no sign of community transmission. ASEAN reiterates that the working methods of the S R should be balanced and constructive, taking into account the perspective of the government with the primary role in the promotion and protection of human rights. Under national circumstances, the use of reliable, verifiable sources and factual information is critical in this respect. ASEAN strongly encourages the continued pursuit of the constructive cooperation. The practice of naming and shaming should be avoided. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. Next speaker is Denmark on behalf of a group of countries.
Mr. Vice President, I have the honour of delivering this statement on behalf of the Nordic countries. We thank Miss Smith for her important work on the human rights situation in Cambodia. We are very concerned about the human rights situation in Cambodia in particular as concerns repression of the rights to freedom of expression, peaceful assembly and association. There are alarming reports of arrests of human rights defenders, religious leaders and opposition members and of unnecessary and excessive use of force against women demonstrators. Democracy and the rule of law are prerequisites for the full enjoyment of all human rights. We urge the government to protect and respect all human rights, including civil and political rights and to reverse the shrinking democratic space, including for civil society. We call on the government to release all those detained for exercising their human rights and to bring an end to the intimidation of civil society actors. Miss Smith, what do you see as the most important steps for the government to take to reverse the shrinking of democratic space, including for civil society? I thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador. Next speaker is Belgium.
Merci, Monsieur. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. And Belgium associates itself with the statement of the EU. We thank Madame Smith for the report. It is with growing concern that my country notes the efforts to bring intimidation against the voices of dissidents and the same for the shrinkage of civil space and democratic space in Cambodia. We also regret the arrest and tension of human rights environmental defenders. This includes that of a woman who was leaving the U N office in Cambodia at the beginning of this month. This includes those who publish on social media or in other venues commentaries on the issue of the pandemic. This also includes former members and sympathisers of the National Rescue Party of Cambodia. We call upon Cambodia to fully restore the rights to free speech, association and peaceful assembly and that they also bring about a constructive dialogue in order to allow civil society to contribute to the shaping of the future of the country. Madame Smith, might you tell us more of your views on the draft law on public order and the national internet website or portal? How can Cambodia prevent this law from having a negative impact on civic space? Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. Next speaker is France.
Thank you, Vice President. Thank you very much, Madam Rapporteur. We fully support your mandate and we very much hope that you can soon undertake a new mission to Cambodia. We hail the initiatives for reform in the judicial sector, looking at dealing with the backlog on the dockets in the first level trial courts. We also encourage Cambodia to continue efforts in this area. France remains concerned over the adoption of a law on the management of the country under a state of emergency. This could undermine fundamental freedoms and human rights, including freedom of speech, opinion and assembly. The growing pressure and arrests of journalists, human rights defenders, civil society organisations and union members are alarming. France encourages the authorities to ensure the freedom of speech and association as well as continuing its cooperation with the Special Rapporteur and with the High Commissioner's office. We call upon the authorities to ensure an inclusive participation in the public life in the country. Madam Special Rapporteur, what priority measures do you envisage when it comes to tackling Covid nineteen and limiting its impact on the most vulnerable in Cambodia? I thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Japan.
Vice President, Japan appreciates the recommendations made by the Special Rapporteur and looks forward to her continuing constructive engagement. Japan also values the efforts by Cambodia to improve its human rights situation in cooperation with the international community. At the same time, the activities of the opposition and civil society are reportedly still contracting. Japan hopes that the freedoms and rights of the people will be promoted through constructive dialogue by all political stakeholders, regardless of political affiliation. Japan expects the government to take further steps to this end. Japan will continue to support Cambodia's efforts for democratic development. To date, Japan has invited young politicians from the ruling and opposition parties four times and shared our experience of democracy. Japan will also encourage an inclusive dialogue with the participation of the government and civil society in collaboration with U N D P. Japan will support the project by O H C H R to raise awareness on human rights among youth and continue its assistance for legislation, including an improvement of implementation of the civil code. Special Rapporteur, how can technical assistance contribute to improving the human rights situation in Cambodia? The full statement will be uploaded to the extranet. Thank you, Vice President.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Democratic People's Republic of Korea.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The D P R K delegation took note of the report of Special Rapporteur on Cambodia and have sensitively listened to the remarks made by countries concerned. We commend the Cambodian government's active engagement and productive cooperation with the United States in the system and human rights mechanism in promotion and protection of human rights despite the challenges it faced, including Covid nineteen pandemic, taking into account human rights values, principles of non-discrimination and special needs for vulnerable growth. We maintain the view that the assessment of a country's human rights situation is complete when all views, particularly verified source of data from the government, are taken into consideration with objectivity, non-selectivity and non-politicisation, bearing in mind national particularities in each country. O H C H R should continue dialogue and cooperation with the states for testing importance to the authoritative information provided by governments, care out to work based on its mandate in the objective and impartial manner and stand against politicisation, selectivity and double standards of the human rights. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is China.
Mr. Vice President, the Chinese delegation appreciates the efforts made by the Cambodian government to build the country, promote economic, social, sustainable development and guarantee rights according to the law and improve people's life. Cambodia has taken effective measures to combat Covid nineteen, guarantee people's right to life, health and development and to protect the rights of vulnerable groups. In order to implement accepted U P R recommendations, Cambodia has taken comprehensive and active steps. Its efforts and achievements in promoting and protecting human rights should be well received and recognised. China hopes that all parties will respect Cambodia's sovereignty, independence, territory and integrity, respect the path for human rights freely chosen by the government people and contribute to stability and development of the country. It is on the basis of mutual respect and in line with the principles of non-confrontation, non-politicisation and selectivity that dialogue and cooperation should be carried out in the field of human rights. China firmly opposes the bad practice of using protecting human rights as an excuse to interfere in other countries' internal affairs in an attempt to cause chaos and turbulence in violation of other people's legitimate rights. We also hope that mandate holders will follow the Code of Conduct, care of this mandate with impartiality and objectivity, use verified object information and engage in constructive dialogue and cooperation with the government. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Australia.
Mr. Vice President, Australia thanks the Special Rapporteur for her report and welcomes Cambodia's ongoing engagement with the Special Rapporteur. We acknowledge Cambodia's efforts to contain Covid nineteen and have been pleased to partner with Cambodia on its response and recovery. We are concerned by recent arrests of political, human rights and environmental activists and call on Cambodia to respect and protect all citizens' rights to freedom of expression and assembly as guaranteed under Cambodia's constitution and laws. We remain concerned not all political parties, civil society and media are able to operate freely. We call on Cambodia to resolve Kem Sokha's case expeditiously, transparently and in accordance with procedural fairness. We recommend Cambodia review all laws existing and under development, including the law on associations and non-governmental organisations, to ensure consistency with Cambodia's constitution and the international human rights standards to which Cambodia has subscribed. Australia seeks the Special Rapporteur's views on how the Council can encourage Cambodia to address restrictions on political freedoms and promote long-term stability based on an open political environment. an open political environment. We remain committed to working constructively with Cambodia on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador. Next speaker is Thailand.
Mr. Vice President, Thailand allies itself with the ASEAN Statement. Thailand notes the report of the Special Rapporteur and appreciates the effort behind its preparation. Thailand wishes to highlight three points. First, the human rights situation in any country, including in Cambodia, is complex. Facing the unprecedented challenges from the COVID-19 pandemic, promoting and protecting human rights become more critical. Therefore, we commend the efforts of the Government of Cambodia and the O S C H R in promoting and protecting human rights, particularly the economic stimulus measures and the COVID-19 hotlines, placing people at the center of their support measures. Second, prison reform is an important undertaking. We thus welcome the efforts of the Government of Cambodia in protecting the rights of people behind bars. We further reaffirms our commitment to supporting Cambodia through the model Prison Project, a pilot project on the implementation of the Bangkok rules in Cambodia for the year 2019 to 2020. Third, constructive dialogue and engagement are key to strengthening an inclusive and rights-based development. We encourage the Government of Cambodia to continue its efforts to enhance participation and protect civic space through dialogue and the use of consultative forums. To this end, Thailand encouraged the Government of Cambodia, the Special Rapporteur, and O S C H R to enhance their cooperation, while Thailand stand ready to continue lending our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Switzerland.
Thank you, Vice President. Switzerland thanks the Special Rapporteur for the report on the human rights situation in Cambodia. Switzerland hails the decision of Cambodia to formally support 173 of the recommendations received during its U P R in 2019. However, Switzerland is concerned over the recent wave of arbitrary arrests and intimidation against journalists, political activists, and human rights defenders, men and women alike in Cambodia. Switzerland recalls that their work is essential to the democratic operations in a country, and it should never be hindered. And this includes during the times of COVID-19. Switzerland calls upon the Cambodian government to respect all human rights, and in particular the rights to freedom of movement, expression, association, and peaceful assembly. Switzerland recalls that journalists must be able to freely exercise their profession without fear of being persecuted. Switzerland calls upon the government of Cambodia to guarantee and respect the work and commitment of political activists and members of civil society. Switzerland also calls for an end to all intimidation against individuals, organizations that are exercising their human rights. Madam Special Rapporteur, civic and democratic space continues to be reduced in Cambodia. What are the most urgent measures to be implemented in order to ensure the protection of democratic space? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Bolivarian Republic of Venezuela.
Thank you, Vice President. Venezuela participates in this interactive dialogue, reaffirming that only through genuine dialogue and cooperation, that are fundamental pillars of the Council, is it possible to move ahead with the protection of human rights. We reiterate that the issue of human rights cannot be addressed through selective impositions of specific mandates against sovereign states, and especially when this is without the consent of the country concerned. Cambodia has shown clear signs of cooperation with the Council and the UN mechanisms, having signed nine human rights treaties and having ratified eight. In January 2019, they successfully presented their third report on the U P R. They had accepted the great majority of the recommendations. This is yet another show of their commitment to human rights. The government of Cambodia has adopted S D Gs for Cambodia. Their economic growth is having a positive impact on the enjoyment of economic, social, and cultural rights. The Special Rapporteur, in the exercise of her mandate, while the mandate exists, should work in step with the code of conduct and observe the sacred principles of respect for sovereignty and non-interference in the internal affairs of states, as enshrined in the Charter. We continue to support the efforts of Cambodia to consolidate peace and harmony. This is based on the national political dialogue that has always been put forth by their legitimate government. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Vietnam.
Vice President, Vietnam associated itself with the joint statement of the ASEAN. Vietnam strongly believes that the most productive way to enhance the promotion and protection of human rights is through genuine dialogue and cooperation and to uphold the principles of sovereignty and non-interference in internal affairs of states. We welcome the engagements and cooperation of the Cambodian government with the UN Human Rights Mechanism, including special procedures. We congratulate Cambodia's achievement in socio-economic development, which contribute greatly to the realization of S D Gs, enhancing the living standards and the enjoyment of human rights and fundamental freedoms of Cambodian people. We also commend Cambodia for its achievements in response to COVID-19. According to the W H O, as of early September, there were fewer than 300 confirmed cases and no deaths in Cambodia because of COVID-19. We encourage Cambodia to continue its commitment in promoting and protecting the rights of vulnerable and ethnic minority groups in accordance with Cambodian law and international law. Mr. Vice President, as a neighboring country and a fellow of ASEAN member, Vietnam will continue our close and constructive cooperation with Cambodia in its overall development process. I thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Russian Federation.
Mr. Vice President, we commend Cambodia's cooperation with international human rights mechanisms, including those of the UN. We note Cambodia's active participation in the U P R and its cooperation with relevant Special Rapporteurs. At the same time, we would recall that international human rights cooperation, including in relation to technical assistance, must be constructive and de-politicized without dual standards or any attempts to impose a specific political order. In this context, I would point out that the national and cultural specificities of each state must be taken into account when moving forward human rights. We support Phnom Penh's efforts to improve the human rights situation in the country, their adoption of legislative and law enforcement measures as well. We believe that this work will foster the legal protection and the well-being of the population. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Belarus.
Mr. Vice President, Belarus would like to reassert its consistent position of not recognizing the Human Rights Council's country mandates. We have repeatedly said that the institution of country mandates is riddled with politics, bias, and double standards. We should recognize that efforts to establish a dialogue with the governments of the concerned countries through these institutions have failed repeatedly. We also note the dubious practices of specifically country mandates, in particular when they carry out so-called remote human rights monitoring and remote collection of information. We cannot consider reports drafted on the basis of such methodologies to be reliable or objective. Belarus is concerned by initiatives which politicize the area of technical cooperation and the practice of introducing issues under Item 10, which are not in keeping with the spirit of that agenda item. It is from this perspective that we see the current discussion with the Special Rapporteur on human rights in Cambodia, as well as the previously adopted resolutions of the Human Rights Council. We will continue to emphasize that it is critically important for the Council to develop mechanisms based on dialogue and cooperation with the interested governments, including with the government of Cambodia. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Laos People's Democratic Republic.
The Laotian People's Republic aligns itself with the statement of ASEAN. The Laotian People's Republic thanked the Special Rapporteur for the report on the situation of human rights in the Kingdom of Cambodia. The Laotian People's Republic, as an immediate neighboring country of Cambodia and ASEAN fellow, welcomes the active engagement and productive cooperation of Cambodia with the UN Human Rights Mechanism in promoting and protecting human rights in the country. The Laotian People's Republic also congratulates Cambodia's response to COVID-19 through its whole-of-government and whole-of-society approach in line with the W H O guideline to facilitate enjoyment of human rights by its people. Mr. Vice President, we would like to emphasize that the UN High Commissioner for Human Rights and her office have responsibilities to assist efforts of government through technical assistance and capacity building program in the promotion and protection of human rights based on the consultation with and with the concern of state concerned, while upholding the principle of universality, impartiality, objectivity, and non-selectivity, constructive dialogue and cooperation. I thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. Next speaker is Czech Republic.
Czech Republic aligns itself with the EU Statement. We thank the Special Rapporteur for her work and the update in her report, including detailed information on individual cases. The Czech Republic notes the difficult situation caused by COVID-19 in Cambodia and deeply appreciates that the cooperation between the government and the Special Rapporteur, as well as other UN mechanisms and treaty bodies, has been maintained. We would like to encourage the government to further engage with the mandate and the O E T H R country office. Madam Special Rapporteur, last year, we called for a meaningful dialogue with political opposition, unrestricted space for civil society, trade unions, and free media, and for protected right to freedom of peaceful assembly. Based on the latest report and information by the O E T H R, we must reiterate our statement with stronger emphasis. We are also concerned about the reports of excessive use of force by security forces against demonstrators. Despite certain positive steps, we continue to closely follow the situation of persons connected to the C N R P and of other activist human rights defenders and journalists. The COVID-19 pandemic will have a long-lasting impact on human rights in all countries. Addressing the challenges also represents a unique opportunity to advance sustainable development based on human rights for all. The Czech Republic stands ready to support Cambodia in this regard. Accompanying laws and policies must be in line with international human rights obligations. Madam Special Rapporteur, you have presented a set of recommendations to the government. How can other states assist in this regard? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is United Kingdom of Great Britain and Northern Ireland.
Mr. Vice President, we thank the Special Rapporteur for her report. We welcome Cambodia's attendance at this session and timely submission of the human rights reports. We support the statement by the UN High Commissioner for Human Rights on the 11th of September, which called for Cambodia to end intimidation and use of force against civil society actors and peaceful protesters. Freedoms of expression, peaceful assembly, and association are vital for the enjoyment of the full range of human rights. We are concerned about repeated arrests and intimidation of those seeking to be a part of public discourse about the future of Cambodia and the increasing atmosphere of fear amongst those wishing to air their legitimate views on Cambodia's future. We are concerned that recent arrests of opposition supporters threaten broad-based political participation at upcoming local and national elections in 2022 and 2023. We urge the Royal Government on Cambodia to embrace dialogue to work with civil society, the political opposition, and the people of Cambodia. The United Kingdom stands ready to support genuine attempts to do this. Whilst we acknowledge small steps taken by the Cambodian government to broaden engagement with Cambodian communities since the 2018 election, we would welcome the Special Rapporteur's views on what further steps she believes the government needs to take to ensure greater and fairer political participation in Cambodia. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Myanmar.
Madam President, Myanmar aligns itself with the ASEAN Joint Statement made by the permanent representative of Myanmar. Myanmar thanks the delegation of Cambodia for its statement. We commend Cambodia's continued constructive engagement and cooperation with relevant UN human rights mechanisms, including its cooperation with the O S C H R country office in Phnom Penh. As the state faces the impacts of the unprecedented COVID-19 pandemic across the world, Myanmar is encouraged by Cambodia's measures to address the pandemic and contain the cases. We appreciate the in-country support initiatives by the Cambodian government for the vulnerable groups, including households with women, children, and persons with disabilities. Myanmar believes that only through engagement and constructive dialogue with the country concerned, the human rights mechanism will be effective for solving the challenges. In this regard, we wish to stress that taking into account of the government's priority, the international community, and mandated order must pursue objective, non-selective, and non-politicized approaches with genuine goodwill. As a fellow member of ASEAN, Myanmar will support and cooperate closely with Cambodia for its future endeavor in solving the challenges at base. I thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is New Zealand.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. New Zealand thanks the Special Rapporteur for her ongoing reporting and encourages the government of Cambodia to carefully consider the recommendations of the Special Rapporteur. New Zealand acknowledges some recent steps by Cambodia with regards to civil and political rights, including the relaxation of Kem Sokha's bail conditions. However, New Zealand remains concerned about reports of arrests and harassment of opposition political figures and constraints on the activities of civil society organizations. We continue to call on the government of Cambodia to ensure that opposition figures are free from repression and to take further steps to protect judicial independence and strengthen media freedoms. Opposition parties, human rights workers, civil society, and media all have an important and legitimate role to play in a democratic society, and we encourage Cambodia to ensure that they are able to carry out their work without fear, threats, or arbitrary restrictions. New Zealand acknowledges the efforts of the Cambodian government in preventing the spread of COVID-19 and Cambodia's success in its public health response to date. New Zealand is, however, concerned with reports of arrests of those expressing views related to COVID-19. We encourage the government of Cambodia to review laws which limit rights to freedom of expression. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kuwait.
Mr. Vice President, at the outset, we would like to welcome the constructive interaction of Cambodia with the UN High Commissioner for Human Rights and the Special Rapporteur on the human rights situation in Cambodia. The balanced constructive measures taken by Cambodia in cooperation with the Office of the High Commissioner and the Special Rapporteur reflect positively on the promotion and protection of human rights. It has opened the way for civil society organizations to take active part in several endeavors in the field of human rights and democracy, the support of freedom of the media, peaceful assembly, and additional political participation. Mr. Vice President, in light of the development achieved by Cambodia, I stress that the work on the relevant Special Rapporteur has to be balanced and constructive, taking into account the special situation of the country and the public and official opinion, and to rely on valid sources, and to maintain open channels of communication with the government. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lebanon.
Mr. Vice President, Lebanon would like to thank the UN Secretary General and the Special Rapporteur on their reports on technical assistance to Cambodia and the human rights situation there, and welcomes the cooperation by the government of Cambodia, especially with the Office of the UN High Commissioner for Human Rights, and thanks it for all the efforts exerted in Cambodia. In this respect, we commend the accomplishments achieved so far referred to in the report by the Secretary General, calls upon the government to exert more efforts in this respect. We welcome the measures taken to counter COVID-19 and still uphold the human rights of all its citizens without discrimination and to enforce online distant education. In conclusion, we encourage Cambodia to pursue its constructive efforts and call upon the Office of the High Commissioner for Human Rights and this Council to provide full assistance and support to Cambodia in its efforts to promote and protect human rights in Cambodia. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. Next speaker is Cuba.
Thank you, Vice President. We take note of the information provided during this interactive dialogue. Cuba reaffirms that the provision of consultants, services, technical assistance, and capacity building programs in the promotion and protection of human rights based on the consultation and capacity building should always come based on a request, consultation, and consent of the receiving state. We praise Cambodia for the cooperation shown with numerous human rights mechanisms. We recognize also that Cambodia has made efforts to implement the recommendations accepted during the UPR. Vice President, Cuba will continue to defend the basic principles of any cooperation program. This includes those that unfold in the realm of human rights. For the assistance to be truly effective, it must be in step with the terms, limits, and priorities established by the states concerned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ireland.
Mr. Vice President, Ireland wishes to thank the special rapporteur for her update and aligns with the statement of the EU. Ireland is concerned at the continued repression of civil and political rights in Cambodia and the lack of implementation of the special rapporteur's recommendations. In particular, we are concerned by the enactment of a state emergency law in April 2020 that further restricts civil society actors, political activists, and journalists from exercising their rights to freedom of expression and peaceful assembly. It is also crucial that any limitations on the free flow of information, especially online, are also temporary in nature. Ireland is alarmed by reports of threats and harassments against human rights defenders and cases of arbitrary arrest and detention. We call on authorities in Cambodia to uphold their obligations under international human rights law and immediately release all unlawfully held detainees. We urge the government to cooperate with the special rapporteur to create conditions conducive to free political participation and civil expression. We also urge the government to repeal or review the law on political parties and the law on non-governmental organizations. Madam Special Rapporteur, you have noted that there has been very little progress on the implementation of your previous recommendations. Given the current context of the COVID-19 pandemic and associated operational limitations, how can the international community support your work in the coming year? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Philippines.
Thank you, Chair. We thank the ESR for the presentation of her report. The Philippines acknowledges the steps taken by the Cambodian government in further advancing the economic, social, and cultural rights of its people, including the right to development. We also recognize the government's efforts to address recommendations received during its recent UPR pertaining to civil and political rights. In this regard, we note with appreciation Cambodia's conduct of the biannual government CSO partnership forum and the drafting of the law on rights to information in consultation with stakeholders, among others. We commend Cambodia for the support and cooperation it extended to the OETHR country office and the mandate holder for the past 30 years since their establishment. We are pleased to note the extensive areas of technical cooperation and assistance being extended by both OETHR and the ESR as reflected in their respective reports. As a strong advocate of technical cooperation, the Philippines continues to underline that the extension of technical cooperation on human rights must be made upon the request of and in consultation with the country concerned. We wish to ask the ESR on how she ensures that her work completely contributes to the achievement of the broader national development agenda being pursued by the Cambodian government, including with its UN country team. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Next speaker is Egypt.
Sir. Mr. Vice President, my delegation comments the efforts exerted by Cambodia in order to promote and protect human rights and its keenness to cooperate with the human rights mechanisms. We encourage the government for the progress achieved and stress the importance of providing it with technical support in order to improve the human rights situation there. We stress the importance of technical assistance and the building of national capacities in order to promote the capacities of countries and support their national efforts and improve the economic, social, political, and cultural rights of its people, including the right to development, and that it has to come upon the request by the country in accordance with its needs and priorities. And we commend the role of the Office of the High Commissioner for Human Rights in the field of technical assistance and capacity building in order to promote and protect human rights around the world. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. Next speaker is Turkey.
Vice President, we note the report and remarks of the special rapporteur. Despite the challenges it faces, Turkey is encouraged by progress made by the Royal Government of Cambodia in the promotion and protection of human rights. The constructive engagement of Cambodian authorities during the third cycle of UPR, which took place last year, and accepting most of the recommendations were good examples. Within this context, we take a positive note in the formation of three regional appeal courts, budget boost for support of victimized women and girls, and increased legal aid schemes. We also understand that Cambodia has given priority to disadvantaged groups in the scope of this human rights situation. In this regard, we are glad to observe the formation of a team of volunteer lawyers to defend women and girls who cannot afford their representation, as well as the establishment of the Health Rehabilitation Center to meet the need of these groups. We commend the efforts of Cambodian authorities to fight against COVID-19 pandemic. Establishing a program to give cash handouts to the poorest households to alleviate the financial burden caused by coronavirus and supporting the social and economic rights of the vulnerable groups from the pandemic are noteworthy. We encourage the relevant Cambodian authorities to maintain their efforts in promoting and protecting human rights in accordance with their international obligations, and call on the international community to support Cambodia in this process. I thank you.
Thank you very much. We shall now turn to the list of speakers for non-governmental organizations. First on our list is International Federation for Human Rights Leagues.
Mr. Vice President, Madam Rapporteur, FIDH remain extremely concerned over the closing civic space in Cambodia, illustrated by the recent wave of arbitrary arrests and detention of activists, human rights defenders, and artists for the exercise of their rights to freedom of expression and peaceful assembly. We call for the immediate and unconditional release and for all charges against them to be dropped. We also reiterate our call on the Cambodian authorities to cease all acts of harassment and intimidation against individuals for the legitimate and peaceful criticism of the government, amend repressive legislation such as the law on association NGOs, the law on trade unions, and the draft law on public order, and repeal the state of emergency law. We are disturbed by the government's ongoing inaction following the disappearance of Thai activist Wan Chalam Satsatseet, who was last been seen on 4 June 2020 in Nong Pen. The scarcity of information collected by the authorities during the investigation they are purportedly conducted points to their presence at best or a complicity at worst in Mr. Wan Chalam's disappearance. We urge the authorities to immediately set up an ad hoc investigative body tasked with determining effectively, independently, and impartially Mr. Wan Chalam's fate and whereabouts in accordance with the CED guidance.
World Organization Against Torture.
Excellencies, I am vulnerable so what a Cambodian human rights activist.
Excuse me. Can you stop for a moment? I see that Representative of Cambodia would like to take the floor, please.
I think the mic. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. First of all, I would like to question the accreditations of this NGO.
Thank you. I have been informed by Secretariat that this speaker has been accredited in conformity with the established procedures. NGO in consultative status with the Economic and Social Council of the United Nations can accredit the persons of their choosing. Complaints about the conduct of an NGO should be addressed to the NGO committee of ECOSOC. Sorry, I didn't notice, but I was advised that some other delegation also raised that plate. Was this a case or? No. Then please continue.
Excellencies, I am vulnerable so what a Cambodian human rights activist.
Excuse me. Can you stop a little bit? Representative of Cambodia, please, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I would like to question the legitimacy of this representative of this NGO, given his sovereign robe.
Okay, Sir Ambassador, I can only repeat what I said at the beginning, that this speaker was accredited in conformity with the established procedures, and I'm not sure about any rule which would dictate the dress of the speaker. If I understand correctly that you refer to the dressing of the speaker.
Mr. Vice President, if he represent the NGO, if he is a member of an NGO, why does he also serve as a monk?
Venezuela, you asked for the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. Venezuela joins the point of order from the delegation of Cambodia, as expressed by that delegation. If the legitimacy of the speaker cannot be verified, then the speaker, then the floor should not be given to that speaker in this council. We would request that that speech or statement be withdrawn.
Thank you. Next speaker is Russian Federation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. We would like to support the point of order of our colleague and request the secretariat to clarify the accreditation of this particular NGO representative who is speaking today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker on our list is Australia.
Thank you. We fully support the right of civil society to speak here at the council. The NGO is an accredited ECOSOC entity. The individual has been accredited through the usual processes of the United Nations. I'm not aware of any rule or procedure that prevents a religious person or a member of a religious organization addressing the council. Indeed, that happens on a regular basis. We fully support the civil society speaker continuing to address the council, and we ask that they be able to do so.
Thank you. Next speaker is Czech Republic.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. As we've just heard confirmation from your side, from the side of the OETHR Secretariat, that this is indeed an approved NGO by the ECOSOC. We believe and hope that this intervention can continue without us commenting on the substance of the intervention, but for the sake of a genuine dialogue with civil society, we hope that we can continue. Thank you.
Thank you. China asked for the.
Thank you. China supports this point of order raised by Cambodia. We would like the president to clarify the credential of this speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Cuba.
Thank you, Vice President. Unfortunately, this is not the first time that we see incidents of this nature. We support other colleagues in saying that the NGOs do have a right to bring forth their position in this forum. However, what is being brought forth, as we've heard from some speakers, is not the substance of the matter, but rather the point of order. This is not a matter of the right of the NGO to be accredited and speak, but rather of the legitimacy of a specific speaker. And this is not the first time that this has happened. As we've said, the state concerned has a very serious point of order, and we think that it is fair for it to be considered. We must be working in step with the established procedure. Thank you.
Thank you. Germany.
Thank you very much. The Human Rights Council serves as a platform for open dialogue, for sharing opinions and experiences, and we believe that the feedback and input of civil society is important in advancing the discussion on human rights, and their engagement should be encouraged by this councils and council and not hampered. And after the points that have been raised and your assessment, we find no reason to, for this council to continue to disrupt the statement being presented, and that the level of respect towards the space of NGOs should be preserved in this council. So we would like this to continue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I very much agree with distinguished representative of Cuba that this is not the first time we face this kind of situation. And because it's not the first time, this council established some procedure to follow in such situation. And the procedure is that any country which is questioning the legitimacy of the speaker or the representative of NGO has a right to complain about it to NGO committee of ECOSOC. And I understand that in the last situations like this, the countries concerned did this, and they got response or opinion from the particular committee. With this, I would like to offer the floor back to the speaker.
Excellencies, I am vulnerable so what a Cambodian human rights activist. I had to flee Cambodia.
Can you stop for a moment? Cambodia, you have the floor.
Mr. Vice President, I propose the point of order because we question the status and legitimacy of this representative of the NGO. According to the informations that the government sends to me, he is not a real monk. He has been defrocked in Cambodia already. Secondly, he also has been charged with rape and defamation in according to Article 293 and 305 of the Criminal Code of Cambodia.
Excuse me, sir, but I think in the Human Rights Council, we should avoid this kind of accusation. If you have information which can make decision-making of committee of ECOSOC, which would be relevant for them, please forward this information to the committee. And I would like to offer now the ruling that I ask the representative of NGO to continue.
Excellencies, I am vulnerable so what a human rights defender activist. I had to flee Cambodia because of a defamation campaign due to my work. For more than 11 years, I have been defending the rights of community who have been forced from their lands. Today, the human rights situation in Cambodia is getting worse. They're killing democracy. There are no free elections, no freedom of expression, and no freedom of assembly. Many activists have been arrested, tortured, and have fled the country. Myself and other human rights activists have been documenting abuses. We are driven by desire for peace and justice. I call on the international community to come to the rescue of democracy in Cambodia. I would like the UN Human Rights Council to hold Cambodia accountable.
Thank you very much. Unfortunately, time is up. Next speaker is Article 19, International Center Against Censorship.
I make this statement on behalf of Article 19 and the Cambodian Center for Human Rights. The situation for fundamental freedoms in Cambodia continues to sharply deteriorate. In the past two months alone, at least 28 people have been arrested for exercising their rights to freedom of expression, assembly, and association, the majority of which have been charged with a vague and problematic criminal offense of incitement. The COVID-19 pandemic has seen an escalation of human rights violations, including the promulgation of the new law on the management of the nation in a state of emergency, which was hastily drafted in response to the pandemic. The law grants The law grants broad powers to restrict fundamental rights and creates ambiguous criminal offenses with disproportionate penalties. The government has become increasingly aggressive towards independent media during the pandemic, revoking the licenses of legitimate news outlets and pursuing legal action against journalists engaged in much-needed public scrutiny of the government's COVID-19 response. Media outlets and journalists have also been targeted for speaking out on sensitive topics, including lands' rights issues. We deplore the arrest and detention of journalists Sovam Rithi, Sokul Dom, Rosoket, and Kaya Ho on charges of incitement and call for their immediate release. Worryingly, the government has used this period to push for more repressive legislation. A draft law on public order would subject assemblies to prior authorization and criminalize an extensive array of legitimate expression. Further, a draft sub-decree on the establishment of a national internet gateway threatens to facilitate state surveillance and censorship by directing all internet traffic to a gateway controlled by the government. We call on the government to immediately abandon these laws. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Next speaker is Civicus.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The Royal Government of Cambodia's attempts to silence dissent in the country by criminalizing political opposition, shutting down media outlets, jailing journalists, and targeting human rights defenders and civil society groups is ratcheting up. Twenty activists, artists, and human rights defenders have been imprisoned since July. Civicus and CCHR are alarmed by the sharp deterioration of human rights, which at the moment shows no sign of abating. Prominent rights groups have been targeted by authorities for their work, and this year alone, at least fifteen journalists have been summoned or arrested by police and judicial authorities as a result of their reporting. Repressive laws are used to curtail civic freedoms. A heavily criticized draft law on public order and a draft sub-decree establishing a national internet gateway loom brimming with potential to facilitate further human rights violations. We question Special Rapporteur's suggestion that the Cambodian authorities have displayed increased awareness of international human rights norms and standards during her tenure as Special Rapporteur. During this period, a systematic crackdown on political opponents, labor activists, independent media, civil society organizations, and human rights defenders has transformed Cambodia's human rights situation for the worst. Such a severe and ongoing crackdown on all forms of dissent and curtailment of civic space should be clearly condemned. We believe an escalation in human rights violations merits a similar escalation in council action, and we call for the councils to take such action before Cambodia's hard-fought democratic freedoms are lost further. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Asian Forum for Human Rights and Development.
Madam President, the government of Cambodia continues to attack its critics, including trade unionists, journalists, political opposition, and human rights defenders. Lango, the State of Emergency Law and the Draft Public Order Law are examples of legislative efforts to systematically restrict fundamental freedoms. Similarly, the proposed decree on the National Internet Gateway will impose serious restrictions on fundamental freedoms online. On September 3, three staff members of the environmental NGO Mother Nature, Thun Rata, Long Kontia, and Phong Kya Resme were charged with incitement to commit felony for planning a peaceful march to oppose the feeling in Bang Tam Klee. Since July, at least nineteen people were detained and charged with incitement for calling for the release of detained union leader Rong Chuen, who was arrested in July 31 and charged with incitement for criticizing land infringement in the Cambodia-Vietnam border that caused farmers to lose their land. COVID-19 restrictions have provided the government yet another excuse to intensify attacks and critics. At least thirty people were arrested in the first six months of this year over allegations of spreading fake news about the pandemic. The government's refusal to conduct credible investigations into the assassination of political commentator Kem Lee four years ago remains a chilling reminder of risks against human rights defenders in the culture of impunity in Cambodia. We call on Cambodia to end attacks against human rights defenders, journalists, and civil society, and amend all legislation that restricts fundamental freedoms. We further call on the council to mandate additional monitoring reporting by the OACHR on the situation in Cambodia. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lawyers Rights Watch Canada.
Madam President, Lawyers Rights Watch Canada thanks the Special Rapporteur for her work. We underscore the finding in her summary report that Cambodia has made little or no progress to implement her recommendations over the past five years. A legitimate parliament and justice system are vital to the fulfillment of economic, social, cultural, civil, and political rights for all. Gaps in fair and equal access to justice are conspicuous at this time of rising unrest about unequal impacts of economic stress on people facing poverty, debt, and landlessness. Through its one-party parliament and executive-controlled legal system, Cambodia impedes access to equal justice by making and misusing laws that violate public participation rights and freedoms of expression, association, and assembly. The recent crackdown on dissenters includes dozens of arbitrary detentions of political activists, journalists, unionists, environmentalists, and defenders. Human rights will remain unfulfilled until Cambodia establishes genuine independence and integrity of the judiciary, legal profession, and other institutions in line with its international obligations. We ask that all states urgently call on Cambodia to implement its rights obligations, including the Special Rapporteur's recommendations. We would welcome the Special Rapporteur's advice about her priorities for the coming year and how states and civil society can best support effective fulfillment of her mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker is Next Century Foundation.
Madam President, rapid deportation threatens indigenous population of the Kingdom of Cambodia, who now faces internal displacement. We urge Cambodia to accommodate indigenous land claims within its proposed Environmental and Natural Resources Code. We believe half a million cubic meters of timber is transported annually through Cambodia into the Socialist Republic of Vietnam. Vietnam earns 10.5 billion US dollars a year from wood exports, its biggest markets being United States of America, Japan, and the People's Republic of China, and the European Union. Illegally sourced Cambodian rosewood is being sold through the 2001 US-Vietnam bilateral trade deal and the 2019 EU-Vietnam voluntary partnership agreement. We suggest that the United Nations Human Rights Council assemble a pact-finding mission to determine the extent of the export of illegally logged Cambodian timber via Vietnam. The world's dratany for hardwood timber must not be satisfied through exploitation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now I would like to give the floor to the distinguished representative of Cambodia for final remarks. Sir, you have three minutes.
Mr. Vice President, we are heartened by the wide recognition that we heard today from many states as to our national effort and progress, as well as encouragement for constructive ways forward. Cambodia maintains that freedom of expression does not equate to freedom of spread fake news or to defend others and to incite violence, which are not condoned in the EU either. Last year, a Special Rapporteur condemned this council, Mr. Samson C., for his defamatory language and incitement to overthrow a legitimate government. This person has recently declared to renew his malicious plan. Like other countries, public gatherings are subject to permission from local administration. Peaceful assembly in cooperation with authorities and in full adherence to security and safety measure is the constitutional and legitimate exercise of this freedom. The one seeking to pressure judiciary or leading to violence, social chaos, and disruption of public order and health is a crime, thus requiring the attention of the authorities. This practice is identical in the EU member states. It is unfortunate that the SO and some Western countries continue to construe the application of law in Cambodia, which seeks to shield law-abiding citizens as oppression of a particular group. Paradoxically, the same measures, when employed in the above said countries, are considered necessary and lawful to maintain public order, social stability, and to uphold their sovereignty. A claim that legal actions are directed at human rights NGO defenders is prejudiced and selective. There is no shortage of evidences that pro-government individuals have been arrested and prosecuted in line with the law over the years. An affiliation with a political party or an entity is not a license to break the law with impunity. A crime is a crime, and it cannot be justified for any other aspiration. To take law enforcement as oppression of freedom is to denigrate the rule of law and equal application to all citizens, as warranted by the Constitution. It is the duty of everyone, including the so-called human rights activists, to exercise their rights responsibly within the bounds of law. All rights are not absolute but contingent. ICCPO stresses that the exercise of freedom of expression, association, and peaceful assembly carry with it special duties, responsibility, and limitation provided by law. Mr. Vice President, no state can guarantee complete absence of human rights problems, including those in the EU. Humiliation, pressure, and unilateral coercive measures are counterproductive, only leading to confrontation and polarization. Any shortcomings should be overcome with demand-driven technical cooperation and capacity bidding. Recommendations should be directed to design, not the superficial symptoms. As a country rectifying almost core international human rights instruments, Cambodia remains steadfast in promoting human rights, sustainable development, and rule of laws, as well as upholding our hard-earned peace. The peace that is cherished by our people who strive to pass is known to all delegation in this room. I thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Ambassador, and with the kind permission of agreement of our colleagues' interpreters, we will continue for a couple of minutes, and we will listen to Special Rapporteur and her concluding remarks. Madam, you have five minutes, please.
Thank you, Vice President. Thank you also to the interpreters, and I've been asked to go quite quickly, but I'll try not to. Thank you very much for all the comments and for the responses. To try to pick up on the key points, in response to Vietnam, the Democratic People's Republic of Korea, and obviously Cambodia, I firmly believe that all human rights are indivisible, interrelated, and should apply to everyone equally. My work and reports cover a range of rights, including collective rights, civil, economic, social, political, cultural rights, and I believe that that's what I should be doing because my mandate requires me to do so. With respect to the comments from the People's Republic of China, Vietnam, Venezuela, and other states, human rights are the primary responsibility of the states which accept and sign up to the treaties. How states give effect to the international standards and international law is a matter of international interest and indeed the primary subject of my mandate. I assure excellencies, I work with the government and its development partners, and it picks up on what Belarus and Kuwait also said. I should assure you that the renewal of my mandate was with the consent of Cambodia, and I work with the country and collect data with their consent, and they have the opportunity to fact-check all of my reports, and indeed I actively ensure they are contained in an addendum to my report so the council has a full understanding of issues. With respect to the Denmark-Australian comments on the shrinking civil society space, in order to ameliorate this position, it's necessary to review and revise Lango in a consultative way with civil society members, and also to ensure that all restrictions on freedom of expression, assembly, and association are in accordance with law. As Cambodia notes, freedom of expression and assembly can be limited in accordance with international human rights law. In methods that are echoed in national law, it can provide for the limitations. However, those areas of national law which limit freedoms of expression and assembly must reflect international human rights standards. With respect to the comments of the UK on improving the political space, rapprochement is needed, a peaceful, meaningful dialogue and reconciliation. There's a need to have a broadening of diverse political views, which are expressed constructively, not with inflammatory rhetoric, but constructively, in advance of the next election. And as Ireland notes, there should be a review and reform of Lango and the law in political parties. Turning to the work of Philippines, I believe I work well with the UN Country Team and with the government, whose rectangular strategy indeed builds on elements of sustainable development, and the localization plan builds on some but not all elements of the UN Sustainable Development Goals. So therefore, I think there is a link with that. Thailand, interestingly, raised the issue of prison reform. I welcome measures to reform the prison system in Cambodia, ease overcrowding, and improve conditions. There is much to be done. I have concerns at this present time with respect to the changing rules and regulations on telephone access for detainees, and I also am concerned at variations on the visits of family members to detainees during their initial quarantine period. Some detainees can visit, some cannot, so I think there's a need to kind of address that issue as well, and definitely bring Cambodian prison regulations in accordance with the UN minimum standards. Turning to the EU, Belgium, and the Czech Republic, with how best to assist Cambodia, many partners, including the EU and EU member states, have reiterated their commitment to working with Cambodia. And as Japan also notes, this is a mandate with technical assistance, and picking up in the comments of many states, much depends on the requests and initiatives or invitations by Cambodia. Technical assistance isn't foisted on the state, it's something that should be consensual, and Cambodia has benefited from a wide range of technical assistance initiatives over the years when I've been the mandate holder and indeed before. So it's a matter, I think, of constructive dialogue with Cambodia to establish what technical assistance it would like and appreciate from states. France focused on the COVID-19 support. There are, in my view, two areas of work. Firstly, to work with partners to strengthen preparedness should the virus take hold in Cambodia, and work with the World Health Organization, the UN Country Team, and others. Secondly, to regularly review the stimuli package the government has developed to ensure that the country can build back better after all the restrictions are eased. That comes from the SINDI disaster framework, but also to focus on ensuring that the most marginalized and vulnerable in Cambodia are not left behind, and probably assistance would help with monitoring this kind of wider picture to ensure that everyone is supported in the economic stimuli package, because there's a lot of unemployment, job losses, particularly in the informal sector and in tourism and entertainment. Then that is the challenge.
Madam Rapporteur, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but our time is running up, and may I kindly ask you to finish your concluding remarks, and if I may suggest, you can send your response to the questions by states in written form.
Okay, well, just to conclude then, Belgium raised the draft law on public order. The government have assured me it is a very early draft. I will comment on it when I receive it. I have views, but I need to see what the government is proposing. And finally, I would like to thank the desk officers and backstopping desk officers and others who have accompanied me on missions to Cambodia, and I strongly believe that we all, the UN, the council, and Cambodia share the desire to improve the human rights for people in Cambodia, and I look forward to seeing the changes and improvements developing in the months ahead, and I wish everyone well at this difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This brings us to the end of this interactive dialogue, and I wish to thank Mrs. Smith for her participation today. And I understand that one delegation has requested to exercise the right of reply with regard to today's interactive dialogue. And in this time, I would like to ask our interpreters whether they can stay three more minutes to interpret the right of reply by one delegation. If this is the case, then I offer the floor to Representative of Russian Federation. You have three minutes, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are obliged to exercise our right of reply with respect to several delegations who made statements during the discussion on Ukraine. Crimea and the city of Sebastopol, I would recall, is part of the Russian Federation. Here we are discussing the situation of a different country, Ukraine. The monitoring mission for human rights in Ukraine has no mandate to assess the situation in other countries. In the report on human rights in Ukraine, there are references to murders by government forces of civilians, strikes carried out against civilian infrastructure, torture, attacks against journalists and human rights defenders, and a lack of progress in investigating murders on the Maidan and in Odessa, as well as multiple other mass human rights violations. So a number of questions arise. Why do the authorities in Kiev accuse everyone of their own sins but not themselves? What is behind the fact that many governments are closing their eyes to what is occurring in the Ukraine and praising the so-called successes of Ukraine in protecting human rights? And finally, on what basis does the representative, being an international civil servant, express a biased position when discussing human rights in Ukraine? And on what basis does she accuse another country which has no relation to any alleged human rights violations? I would appeal to all to respect the work that the Human Rights Council is doing, and this reply is to all the delegates who made these statements. There are human rights violations that are taking place. There are human rights violations that are taking place in Ukraine, and those are the violations that should be discussed here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, we will reconvene tomorrow at 10:00 AM for the enhanced interactive dialogue on the report of the High Commissioner on the situation in the Democratic Republic of Congo, and the final report of the team of international experts on the situation in Kasai, followed by the interactive dialogue with the independent expert on the situation of human rights in the Central African Republic. With expressing our gratitude to interpreters for staying with us longer, I hereby close the 31st meeting of the 45th session of the Human Rights Council.